As hard as it can.
All right, it's seven o'clock and we are going to go in and call our meeting to order. And what we lost, I saw, I know I saw Garrett come in.
Yeah.
He's in the restroom. All right, well then we're gonna wait just a couple of minutes.
The old man might be more than a witness.
Eric, we can hear you.
And we are live. I can't wait to rewatch this and hear what Mark just said again there.
I'm sorry.
Always a smart aleck.
Yeah, and it, well, or Jeff, so, you know. We are, we are waiting for you, Mr. Perry. Yeah, that clock is, that clock is slow. So it works out. All right, if everyone will, please stand, we're gonna call our meeting to order, we're gonna ask Mr. Perry to say a prayer for us as we open up today.
All right. Thank you very much. Father God, as we come to you tonight with this last meeting in December, and so we just want to thank you for bringing us thus far. So Father God, we realize and understand that January will be 2022, and Father, we just pray that you would keep us safe until then. We thank you for blessing this great community and this great city of Alma that we love so much. Father God, I pray blessings upon our council members, fire, police, as well as our illustrious lawyer. Father, I pray blessings upon them for this holiday season, and I pray that we not forget that Jesus is the reason for this season. Bless this meeting that will be done decently and in order. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Amen. Everybody face the flag, hand salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And as everyone is sitting, I will share with you that our Mr., beloved Mr. Perry has been asked to be vacationed for the opening night ceremonies at our municipal league winter meetings in January, so that's quite a while.
I don't, I don't think they'd require anybody else to do that. Let's get the Gary Perry to do it. The president, the president of the municipal league, I had the pleasure of being at the old college of the Osors with him. I ran track with the honorable Tim McKee, college of the Osors, back in the day.
Wow, that's special. All right, well, we look forward to those meetings coming up in January.
Absolutely.
Mr. Reynolds roll call, please.
Sandra Kilpatrick. Gary Perry.
Here.
Evan Thatcher.
Here.
James McGee.
Here.
Larry Glassingame.
Here.
Eddie Wakefield.
Here.
All right. Next up on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Everyone should have a written copy of those minutes, and I would entertain a motion.
I just saw one typo.
Okay.
Oh, what is it?
No, I'm not sure, maybe I couldn't read. I was reading it, and I said, nothing exactly what does that mean?
I've had several of those too that have.
Uh, let me see where it was at over here. I didn't even mark it because I figured it was okay, you know, but it said, uh, let's see where I was at. Uh, blah, 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 I wish I'd marked it. It said something about the most, mostis.
The most mostis?
Or something like that, all right. Uh, let's see.
The most?
No, it's, it was like, uh, let me see, I'll find it here in a minute. I say it will.
While you're looking for it, there's another correction.
It's just a, it's a double, uh, it's, it's using the same word twice, that's what it's doing.
Okay.
I'll find it here. I read it and didn't mark it, I thought I wasn't gonna say anything about it, but.
You just indicated that it was present to me and I assure you I was not.
Oh, oh, yes, yes, that is correct.
When do you see that? Oh, you see that, you're right, I'll fix that.
But I move that we accept the minutes.
With the correction.
With a, so we need a motion to waive a reading of the minutes and accept with the correction that Mark Yardley was not in attendance at that meeting.
And then I will start with the typo.
So do we have a motion?
So. Uh, from you. Our second.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Perry and a second from Mr. McGeeth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Committee reports, we have none. Citizens form, we have none. We have no old business, and that's gonna take us to the new business. First up is going to be the resolution 2021-17, and that's gonna be a little out of order in your packet. It will be the second page in your packet. And we need a, a motion to bring this resolution to the table, please.
Some move.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Perry, do we have a second? Motion to bring resolution 2021-17 to the table? No second. Okay. And we will move on.
Does this mean Mrs. Angel? I don't understand.
Yeah, it'll have to, it'll have to be presented at the next council meeting. Next on your agenda is gonna be ordinance 2021-9. I need a motion to bring this to the table. Ordinance 2021-9. We'll move on to let's see here, resolution 2021-18. We need a motion to bring this resolution to the table, if we could, please.
Motion to bring resolution 2021-18 to 2022 water street budget. I'll start with discussion.
We have a motion from Mr. Wakefield, and we have a second from Mr. Patrick.
Hi.
Second from Mr. Patrick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, resolution 2021-18, this is the resolution to adopt the water and street budget. It's open for discussion. Anybody has any questions? If there are no questions, we need a motion to adopt.
Some move.
No second.
Second. We have a motion from Mr. Wakefield to adopt resolution 2021-18, we have a second from Mr. Thatcher. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is the resolution 2021-19, and this is for the ARPA funds. We need a motion to bring this to the table. Resolution 2021-19. The motion to bring 2021-19 to the table, okay? All right. Next up is your resolution 2021-20. This is for the retail study, we need a motion to bring this to the table, please.
I would all like a motion that we table that until we have a study session that all of the flatmen asked for to discuss that.
I'll just second that motion.
Okay, besides that, that has been asked for, and we have not had that yet.
Okay. All right, resolution 2021-20, and that is taping.
For a study session, not for.
Table for a study session.
Okay. Uh, next up, I assume that this was, is this supposed to be discussion for?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, we need a motion to bring the Christmas bonus for the volunteer firemen to, uh, to the table for discussion.
Some moves.
Okay, second. There's a motion from Mr. Perry and a second from Mr. Glassingame. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good study.
Okay. Uh, open for discussion.
So we discussed this in our study session, and I asked that we put on the agenda, and so I think our fire department, our volunteer fire department, that is, does an awesome job, and I'd like to make a motion that they be awarded a $250 bonus as well.
You have to be careful if they're volunteers, it gets kind of sticky.
So what can I say, what do they say?
I don't know how your guys are, I'm assuming they get a stipend, and I don't know if they get a meeting stipend, or calls stipend, or I don't know how, I don't know what your rate is.
They have a per call.
So what I would recommend is you have a special Christmas meeting, a stipend associated with that. If you just give them money, it blurs the line between volunteers and employees, and it gets, it gets kind of sticky.
So, uh, any member has to have a meeting?
So, so volunteer firemen's by nature not supposed to get paid, right? And so the money, the money you give them is supposed to be reimbursement for expenses incurred in line with their volunteering, right? And so if you sort of do extras, it's kind of sticky and dire. And so I have no problem with the idea you got, I just want you to.
I'm saying, how can we do it in, in a nutshell?
So usually you do it through a Christmas meeting, you know, and do it that way.
When you have a Christmas meeting, you have an hour of Christmas meeting?
We can have one.
We have one.
Okay.
So is there already money in the budget for that? Can you just, I can work with the, if it's already in your budget, I can work with the fire chief to get it hammered down.
Okay.
Not, not specifically, there's room in the budget for it, but, but.
If you got a line item where it, that'll be, I don't know how their budget looks, but if they've got, you know, volunteers stipend line item, it's got enough in it.
Volunteer allowed.
Yeah, allowed, and if there's enough in that line item, then I can, I can work with the fire chief.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, just another bit of more to be excluded for that.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any other discussion for that?
So nothing to be decided there right now, but you're gonna work with the chief to look at that, and then we have to run on that. As long as it's in the budget. No.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, move on. Car wash reimbursement? Hang on, we need to, I, I wasn't for sure what this was.
Me either.
Yeah, so, uh, we need, uh, we need a motion to bring this to, uh, to the table for discussion.
So I'm gonna find out what it is.
Okay, we have a, uh, we have a motion from Mr. Thatcher, do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Glassingame, all in favor, say aye.
Let me make sure that was Evan first, Larry second.
Yes. Any opposed, same sign? Uh, it's open for discussion, the car wash reimbursement.
Uh, this is something that the police department has done for, best I can tell, for about 30 years. Uh, this is something we've raised before in our municipal maintenance. I talked to, after the question was raised today, I actually talked to Chief White, and he said when he was first came to work here, and Chief Gregory was here, uh, they did it then. Uh, Chief, Chief White did say that at one point, uh, he believed that at some point there, he did ask for a raise, but this is something that we were, we, again, would budget for, uh, in the vehicle maintenance. We allow the officers $2.50 a week to maintain their car inside and out, keep it clean. And then at, at one point, um, I think we, we did that quarterly, where we got reimbursed for that quarterly. Several years ago, it was changed where they waited till December, and then we got the reimbursement for that whole year. So I presented that to Shauna, and she had some questions, and thought that it would be a good idea to, uh, discuss this. So again, this is, this is for the maintenance, uh, clean car wash, inside and out of the police cars for the officers for, uh, again, and that's set at $2.50 a week, um, which is $130 per officer, um, for the year. So.
And I think that caused the issue to be put on the agenda, she called me about it, and it was lacking document, she was, she was wanting documentation for her, for her check, for purposes, and since it'd been going on for so long, nobody knew where in the minutes years ago it was, and I said, well, easy thing is just we're gonna have a meeting tonight, let's put it on the agenda that they approve it. Um, and one of the reasons is the, the car wash machine takes quarters down there, and so there's no receipts, and so, and then basically it just goes into a stack of quarters that they, they in theory could divvy out so they could go and wash their cars. And so I think the city council just wanted to approve the $2.50 expenditure to the chief for, for use in washing the cars that would get in those minutes and be satisfactory for audit purposes. It's already in the budget apparently, and he's been doing it for a long time.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Thatcher, I mean, a motion from Mr. Thatcher, a second from Ms. Kilpatrick. Again, this motion is to approve the $2.50 reimbursement for car wash and car maintenance fees to your officers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay. All right, let's move on to department reports. Yes, sir. Yes, sir?
For clarification, uh, we also, our guys go in and wash their trucks, but they don't get reimbursed for them, we give them the money to go wash the truck. Is that a different animal?
Well, that's kind of the same thing.
And, and I'm sorry, but.
Reimbursing them.
Mr. Yardley, get in and has to have this on the agenda.
Yeah, clearly, but I wanna, I wanna know what I have to do, but we don't, uh.
Yeah, so that, so I think you're covered.
Okay, we don't, we don't reimburse them, they're not getting regular amount, it's just when they go wash, they can get money, they go wash it with that money.
As long as your treasurer is happy with whatever type of work you've been giving her, that's fine.
Well, I'm giving, because this is a large part of it.
But whoever, whoever's doing your audit and your bookkeeping is.
They're fine with it.
Then all right.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we'll, uh, we'll move on to our department reports, we're gonna start with Chief Wakefield.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Some areas of the fire department slowed down a little bit now that we're moving on into a little bit colder weather, so November was a little bit slower than, but our structured fires were up a little bit, so you can tell that few colder days, people were turning the heat is on. So we just found a three structured fire, one wildland fire, and one vehicle fire.
Now, I want to commend the, the fire department, I don't know if I'm the wildland fire or the vehicle fire, or both. But, uh, did an outstanding job, and actually the police chief was the first fireman on scene, and so.
Did they save it?
They saved the crop.
They saved the crop.
So I, they did an excellent job. Thank, thank you everybody that was involved in it.
Other than that, everything is good.
Okay. All right, next up, we got Chief Pointer.
Thank you all. Start out on the budget, uh, coming to the end of the year, and, uh, our budget looks in good shape. Would like to point out that, you know, our, our, so 40% of the ones in sales tax that we, again, outpaced are projected, um, through November, uh, were up, it's like 8,100, about what we projected. And that's not, again, not counting December, so that's good. Our salary reimbursement, uh, was the big thing there, is our SRO reimbursement. Actually have a, a check to pick up in the morning for that, which will, for the fourth quarter, uh, which will get us, um, within about $1,000 of what we projected there. Again, that is, if we don't pay it out, we don't get reimbursed for it, so it's kind of a worse there, so. Uh, going to our line items, um, a couple things, uh, against, as I mentioned in the study session, um, the vehicle purchase amount that was budgeted for, for 21, we still haven't gotten a vehicle, uh, so I'm asking that that be moved over to our capital improvement account, so when it comes in, uh, if it does, that we can, uh, still pay for that. Really, the only line item, um, that I'm concerned with right now is the, the department expense, and it doesn't bring any concern here, um, through November, but this month we had several, uh, big items paid out. One of those I talked to you about a couple months ago, and that was one of our firewall for action, uh, so that was about six, and that's ordered, and, uh, I think we've, um, paid all the bills for that now, and that was between 6,000 and 7,000, so uh, we may, uh, end up going over in that line item, that's some, but it won't be over in the, the budget as a whole, so we may, maybe asking for, um, some money to be moved around there. The other thing, um, is dispatcher pay. Several months ago, uh, when the consolidation got, uh, talk got to going, we were having problems keeping the dispatchers, so I talked to you about, um, giving them a retention bonus if they stayed until the end. Uh, as you know, we're down to only one that has stayed. The, right now, it's planned that the last day that we will dispatch is January the 5th, and January the 6th would go, uh, completely dispatched through the consolidated center. Uh, so what I would like to do, uh, is, uh, I discussed, uh, the retention bonus being paying out there, uh, we would have to pay out their vacation time anyway, but retention bonus being paying out their sick time. Uh, the one that I have left, she has quite a bit of sick time built up, uh, which would be, um, just a little under uh, $5,200 salary, and then obviously benefits on top of that, I would put it, uh, just under $6,500. Uh, I would like to go ahead and do that at the last day period this year, since I believe we have a little bit extra in our salary line item, if you guys are okay with that.
Make motion that we approve the $6,500 retention bonus.
Do we have a second? Second from Mr. Kilpatrick, Mrs. Kilpatrick. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you for that. Uh, in good news, uh, we did hire a certified officer. He started December 6th. Um, he's completing his field training now, uh, he is, like I said, certified, so we don't have to send him to the academy. So, uh, we're looking at the, the week after Christmas, he'll be ready to go, excuse me, on his, on his own. Also hired, uh, filled our other spot, uh, actually today, um, it is a, uh, someone that's not certified. Uh, so, um, he will be starting the week after Christmas, um, and we'll have him for two weeks, and then uh, he'll leave and go to the Blitz Academy, um, the second week in January, uh, and be there until, um, the second week in April. Uh, then he'll come back and, and complete the, the 12-week FTO program for a new officer. Uh, so we're looking at about July before, uh, we actually have him on the road, but I believe that, I believe that he's, will be an asset to us, and, um, I think we will, uh, from everything I've heard in the background, he'll be a good officer. Only other thing I had was just a, uh, I guess a shout out, if you want to call that, to the, the focus group. Uh, as you know, Saturday and Monday, we did the shop with the cop, and ended up shopping like, uh, somewhere around 180 kids, and spent somewhere around $12,000, uh, and all that money comes from donations from the community, so, and the focus group is a, a nonprofit organization, so, um, again, that's, that's the awesome community they live in, and I appreciate that. That's all I've got, unless there's other questions.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, Public Works, Mr. Yardley.
Since I was not able to be here last month, um, I appreciate you, I had too much work in time to talk to y'all tonight. Meeting's been short so far, so I'll take a day and do that.
I had to listen to two hours of the study session of you talking, and I wouldn't even hear for that meeting.
You were here.
All right, you have to slow down.
Well, uh, really, I don't have much to share, but, uh, I, I'd like to thank you for your support in our proposal on our sewer and street budgets, appreciate that. And then, um, uh, there was nothing really from October to report on other than the completion of the Rudy Road rehab project. The striping finally was, was laid out, and, uh, have y'all had an opportunity to drive down Rudy Road with the new bike lane striping?
I have, I might say it, looks good.
Comments on it, I mean.
It looks.
Functionality?
Yeah, looks very good.
Any questions about that?
I've had one person ask me what the plan was for the bike lanes in O'Brooke, that side of town, so they thought it seemed a little bit out of place. Do you, would you have a comment on that?
Just that that's, you know, we want to have the entire town look like that, ultimately, and that's what our bike and pit lane calls for. So as we do projects on roads, we'll, we'll include changes to them to, to line up with that, so that ultimately you'll see that a lot of places around.
As someone who likes to ride my bike all over the place, I think it's great, so.
And it's just, it's just the beginning, you know, we had to start somewhere, that was a project we were working on, so as we, as we complete projects, we'll, we'll strive accordingly, so to, to match our bike and pit plan, so.
The, you mentioned on one meeting the different type of striping that was down too, whether it's just a paint, it was a, I don't remember what you call it.
It's thermoplastic, and, uh, that's what was on Rudy Road originally, or the last rehab project, and, uh.
Did that go out on?
Yeah.
It had a longer life, right?
I'm sorry.
It had a longer life expectancy.
It does, yeah, if you, if you look at places even that have just been down for a year, even with some of this stuff downtown here, I mean, it's already faded to almost nothing, and, uh. And, uh, so the thermoplasty though will, will be visible for, you know, about seven, eight years to now. Yeah, it's, it's a much longer lasting product. Costs more, but it certainly improves the life of it. Any other questions about that project? Glad to see that concluded.
I have a question, but I would like for South Side be the next area that you.
For bicyclist driving? Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. You know, when you get something down the main core, while I was thinking down East Street, it'd be good if we had something to accommodate and, and at least, uh, you know, obviously apart from widening the road, your striping is really just putting in share roads. And, and that's what our bike and ped plan calls for, until, until a road is torn completely out and widened to three lanes like Rudy Road was, you can't really put the bike lanes on it. You can only put the share road, which is basically that, that symbol that shows a, a bicyclist, and you put it, you put it in the center of the lane. It's just a reminder that, that you're sharing the road with bicyclist, with cyclists. So that's, that's, that's really what most of our bike lane calls for. Now, as roads are improved, as roads are widened in the future, like we did with the column lane, for instance, that's a good example. Um, then, uh, of course, that's, that was a total road rehab, so I, I understand that that's where you're gonna see that. Rudy Road was a total road rehab. They had ditches, column lane had ditches, but, you know, the places that already have curb and gutters, really hard at this time in, in our, in, in Allen to, to, to tear all those curbs and gutters and drainage out and move it out five feet on each side. That's a, that's a difficult thing to do financially. If it's a total rebuild, like some of the roads that we've done, then it makes sense to make it three lanes so that you can accommodate bike and ped and turn lanes and that type of thing.
And you might have mentioned, um, speaking of the South Side over here, that, um, you know, the application to the MPO for Henry Street. You know, we, we've talked about that and requested that.
Yeah, and, you know, um, there's a, you know, the, the region has to develop a plan for road improvements for the highway department. And one of the, well, several requests we made for here now, we're, we're widening and accommodation of, of, of bikes and pedestrians. And we've asked for that here, you know, from here on Henry, uh, where Marshall Woolley ends, but then Henry starts down towards Kibler, to actually improve that all the way down, you know, a distance, at least to the city limit line, and then, uh, one request, there's actually a dual request, one is to the city limit line, and the other is, uh, to the potential interchange area down in Kibler, so to widen that part. And accommodate, um, pedestrian and bicyclist traffic along that. So it looks similar to Rudy Road if that were the case, so. And then we also asked for the same thing on Seventy-One North to accommodate bike and, and ped traffic. But, but that would also be, you know, remember we, uh, we restriped Seventy-One Highway to add a turn lane? There used to be two lanes going north and one lane coming south, and then we eliminated the, the dual lanes north, and we put a, a turn lane in there to improve safety, and, you know, we talked about that before, but, but we would still like to see dual, dual lanes north, because that, that's where we have a backup, it's at those traffic lights, and as people are heading home in the evening, we really need a, 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 a second lane going north. And it could be just as far as, you know, Maple Shade. It'd be nice to go all the way to Canterbury with it, but we've requested that. We requested to Canterbury, and then we also requested that, in addition to that, they would put bike and ped, um, uh, facilities, I guess is the right word, on each side of the road, so. And then the, uh, the last one was to improve things, uh, on Sixty-four Highway, uh, out towards the, the schools. We actually requested four lanes on Sixty-four Highway between, uh, Seventy-One Highway and the primary school. That's really what we've asked for. That's, that's a big ask, and we know that, but at some point, that's gonna have to happen as the traffic increases on Sixty-four Highway, so. So we've requested all that. They did put in the, uh, the, uh, MPO's, uh, wish list, basically. These, these things often be graded out. There's these, uh, I don't know, it's a, it's a grading system, and, and things rise to the top. The Canterbury Bridge was one of those that, that we, we put on that wish list, and it rose to the top quickly. It actually had the highest rating of anything that was on the list for years that we did that. So, um, it's all about, um, uh, safety primarily. And when you start putting in bike and pedestrian facilities as part of the, the plan, you, you increase the safety, uh, aspect of the project significantly. And that's what we made sure we put in those requests, so hopefully that'll, that'll gain some traction. We'll get at least something out of it. I mean, if we get one project out of this, it'd be great. I would love to see this stretch down south here as the first project. I'd like to see the improvements from where we stopped the improvements here at Mulberry and take it all the way down to the city limit line and this line.
We have a lot of kids that are walking that stretch of road through there, and it's nice for them to walk.
Absolutely. If we could, you know, if we could get that part done and include, uh, a bike lane on each side, well, that'd be fantastic.
Does that also include lighting?
It could, it could. No, that would be up to the highway department, but, uh, we'd certainly request that. Absolutely.
Safety.
Yeah, I appreciate you. Absolutely. Lighting is safety. Absolutely. Any other thoughts on that or questions? If not, um, if you, uh, if you received your, your November council report, I, I made a note about a sewer line replacement. This was, uh, another one of those, kind of like the one we had on, um, on South Street, where we had to, uh, do an emergency repair of a sewer line due to collapse. So this was over there, uh, right off of Maple Shade. It's actually a line that runs from Maple Shade down into the Pin Oak subdivision. And everything within Pin Oak has been, uh, well, except that, that, it's just the closest to column lane, but the majority of Pin Oak has, has new sewer infrastructure. And, uh, what we did is we, we ran this new line from Maple Shade down to the point of the new infrastructure in Pin Oak, so that, that made that all new up to Maple Shade. And so we had a, we had one basin there that was, uh, that was having some difficulties, um, dealing with rain events where it would, uh, we had heavy rains, uh, some manholes would overflow, but it wasn't, it wasn't due to capacity. It was really due to some blockages caused by that line collapse. So, so we had an emergency repair of that. We spent about forty-eight thousand dollars on the project, and, uh, it wasn't in the budget. So at the end of the year, I'll bring that to you, or in January, as, as part of my amended budget, so. Um, other than that, um, I was just gonna make a note that, uh, we had a meeting today, um, of the Fort Smith Regional Alliance, and I don't know if you're all familiar with that. It's kind of an economic, uh, development, um, uh, a strategy group that's here. It's, it's a combination of the city of Fort Smith and all the cities around us. There's a radius that's, that's drawn around the city of Fort Smith, and we all work together and cooperate together to try to, to bring manufacturing and, and, uh, jobs to the area. There's, there's lots of internal support, and, uh, and, uh, what I was gonna tell you is that, uh, uh, each year, a new chairman is appointed to, uh, to chair that committee. And today, they appointed, uh, Mayor Barton as the chair of the, the Fort Smith Regional Alliance. So that's, that's a privilege, and it's an honor, and just wanted to recognize that. But that's all I had. Unless y'all have any questions.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yardley. Uh, next up, planning. Mr. Schindler.
Good evening. So we stay busy with seventeen permits issued, uh, over the month of November. Brought in a revenue of, uh, just over twelve hundred. A little below average, but it's still better than the previous year, uh, a couple of years. Uh, we had one commercial remodel permit, and that's Bridgeline Church, basically moving into the Crays Church, a former Crays church. And then I believe Crays is actually gonna be doing some stuff at the Boys and Fiddles Club for a little bit, so I guess they find a new home. So, um, that's the only kind of notable, uh, permit that was issued, besides roofing permit, again, top issue. So we're also working with the state, uh, GIS office in the county, trying to get our city limit boundary, again, fixed on Maple Shade. Uh, currently, the state has it going right through the middle parcels, and obviously you can't have your backyard, um, city limits, or not city limits, and then front yard, city limits, that doesn't really, uh, work out. So trying to get that all, uh, figured out, hoping by the end of this month. But we're also working with, um, Western Arkansas Plan Development District on doing the redistricting of the wards. And that was already, already an issue, because the state had a mix of, I think Eagle Crest and Ward Two already, and they were trying to figure out how we got our map, and I'm like, well, we, this is what we've been using. It's on our website. It's, you know, in our, in our offices. So trying to get that all situated. Of course, you know, we're still using what we have now, but also still trying to figure out where they got their information. And so we're trying to look at, you know, the possibilities of how we're going to do the redistricting. I think the best way is basically just putting Eagle Crest into Ward Two because of the, um, because of the amount of population there. And then also you have to have these wards contiguous. You can't have them separated, and that's how Eagle Crest's currently is. And so in order to comply and everything else, that's probably gonna be the easiest switch. That would've caused the most, uh, I guess, commotion, because otherwise, we're gonna have to be all over the place, so. We wanted a contract with Western Arkansas Plan Development District to help, you know, as a third party, um, you know, doing this, so we don't have, you know, the city doing it or anything like that. So we do have a meeting with Western Arkansas Plan Development District Tuesday to go over the eventual changes, so. Um, hoping that should be maybe on the January agenda, so we'll see. And so we're also in contact with, you know, three consultants. We have Jen's proposal, um, one proposal, and then two more that I just reached out today asking where those was, because I thought they would give it to me at the beginning of December. And here we are in the middle of December, and they said that, you know, they'll give it to me by the end of December, so. All days. Uh, so planning commission meeting, so we were able, uh, able to meet quorum, because Chris Baker is not re-doing his, um, his membership, uh, appointedship. So, uh, Chabon expires at the end of December, and so his application is before y'all, um, might be, you know, to hopefully approve that. Now, he's currently our chair, and he's very knowledgeable and helpful about everything going on, so, um, I would like for that.
We have a, a motion to approve Mr. Chabon for another term on the planning commission. Motion from Mr. McGee and a second from Mr. Wakefield. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
And so we still have one opening now, and it's within the city limits. So I believe Chris has, um, been in contact with two people to send to me to give me their application to bring before you. I don't know who they are, but, you know, I don't know until I get something. I definitely want it soon, because, um, you know, with the land use plan and, you know, just being able to group stuff, we have, uh, you know, our conditional use permit, our zoning regulations amendment to add the conditional use permit. We have to get that approved by the planning commission before we can proceed to bring it to you guys. Uh, we did hold that public hearing, um, earlier this month. Uh, nobody attended. We do have a recording of it, so we're going to present to the planning commission and let them know and make their, um, decision off of that. But other than that, it's been, uh, it's been good just preparing for next year with the budget, and of course, this land use plan that's going to, definitely take up.
Anybody have anything for Mr. Schindler?
I know, uh, I think Larry asked, uh, you know, who's on the planning commission and what they do, uh, you know, besides the planning commission. Shabon's builder, uh, Jason Parker's a builder, uh, Aaron Ham's a real estate agent. Uh, we have Mr. Valentine, Jerry Valentine, you know, Tyree, principal, Stephen Key, you know, with, uh, Mayor's Business, of course Evan Backer.
Stephen's actually with the co-op.
Co-op, yeah. Oh, sorry. And then Chris, you know, he's, he's gone, so I guess that was, you know, really for change, so.
Any other questions? Anything? All right. Thank you, Mr. Schindler. Move on to our city clerk, Reynolds.
I trust that you're ready. What else didn't you already? And we are cleaning up our twenty-twenty-one files and getting started on our twenty-twenty-two files, with our copy being electronic. And then auditors will be here, Ross will be here at one-thirty tomorrow afternoon, thereabouts. I don't know how long he'll be here, but he will be here starting tomorrow. We are inputting as much as possible prior to year end, because the first quarter is so extremely busy. And when I'm saying inputting, it was the making the clerk's office a department and inputting, you know, it would've been inputting the budget, but, um, let's see here. We are anticipating to end, uh, twenty-twenty-one on a high note after we make all of our transfers. And then, uh, the orthod documentation that was in resolution twenty-twenty-one nineteen was, uh, a lot of work. Or making sure that we have all the documentation for a, a possible audit. For the FOIA request, we had one meeting agenda, one financial data, one resolution, no ordinances, no payroll, and no audio. If you look at your report that I usually send out to you, that's got the year-to-date and month-to-date, um, since the NCOE reports, you know, are movable, you know, with, with the, yeah, hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars that was posted in twenty-one, that was twenty-twenty, uh, expenses, or a transfer, excuse me. So I say, I believe that we are right at about ninety-two percent year-to-date of our anticipated, our proposed, uh, revenue. And then we have been at about eighty-eight percent of our expected expenses. If, uh, if my math is correct, and I feel like it is, so as month-to-date, we have spent seven percent of our anticipated, uh, revenue, and we have expended nine percent of our expenses. And of course, you can see the street departments at a hundred-and-fifty-three percent, like I said last month, because they got the hundred-and-twenty-six thousand earlier this year. And their expenses are at a hundred-and-thirty cent, six, a hundred-and-thirty percent because of the tornado and the issue. And of course, we had a good year at the pool, and we had some higher expenses. So that is where this stands for the line item highlight page. That's the next page in your packet. There were a couple that, um, we've been researching. The one-four-one, one-oh-four for unemployment, that has been posted in a, this is an automatic posting that happens when payroll is done. And I just found out that it was being posted to a different line item, which looked peculiar, so we're researching. That's gonna have to be a, I made an adjustment into that line item, but I'm working with NCOE to get that issue resolved. As you can see where we are in all of the other, um, the other line items, we do have a credit under the Parks Department for the one-four-four-two-oh-two line for the vehicle repair and maintenance. Says that we are, uh, have a credit of eighteen-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars. There was damage to two vehicles, and so we received that money, but we haven't, uh, done the work yet. Has that been scheduled?
Not yet, no.
So that's why that is showing, uh, credit in that line item. And then all these others, as we've been working with the, uh, the twenty-two budget, then we're seeing how those numbers are gonna shake out for twenty-twenty-two. And then your next page is the bank balances as of this morning. What I've been doing is taking, um, about a hundred thousand dollars off that balance. That would take care of the transfer for Eddie, and that would take care of, uh, reimbursing the street department and any other, it would take care of the dispatch, uh, pay, all of that. I'm taking that kind of off the top, so when I'm looking at it every afternoon, I bet we're gonna end around two hundred thousand in that, in the general fund bank account. Any questions on that? Okay, and then the secretary report for the AMP commission is really the same as last month, because we just met this Tuesday, and I haven't had time to update it, so you'll have that in January. And unless you all have any questions about the, um, Act eight thirty-three money or anything else, then, then I am done.
Any other questions for Ms. Reynolds? We'll move on. Um, Parks.
Oh, can I say one more thing about this?
We did receive Act eight thirty-three money, um, seventy-eight-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars and eighty-one cents this week.
We did receive Act 833 money, seventy-eight-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars and eighty-one cents this week.
All right, we'll move on. Parks. Water Park, we are overdoing some work in a snack shed presently. We've pulled out some old counters. We have some new stainless steel tables that we're having to put in. Some of that we had to do because of the new oven that we got. So while we were in the middle of doing that, we, we just made the whole area over there, the prep area, stainless steel. So it's all in compliance with the health department. And they're painting, doing some repairs to the walls and ceilings. And, you know, the idea again is to just try to make the snack shack in there a little more presentable and bringing it up to date. And, you know, I don't think there's been a lot of work in there maintenance-wise in, in a while. So we, they're over there working on that. Once they finish there, we'll move over and start working into the dressing rooms in the front entry area. To make sure to give a big thanks to our two council members that are on the AMP Commission. The AMP approved and committed some money, twenty-five thousand for 2022 and then another twenty-five thousand in 2023 to help with maintenance and slides repair and things of that.
In '22, not '23?
Twenty-one, '22, not '22, '23.
You're getting it sooner than what you're deciding.
So, but two years, yeah, either one, yeah. We'll use it for 2022 season and then again in 2023 season. So anyway, we, it's, uh, we, it, it, that is gonna be very, very helpful. You know, we have a lot of restoration work to be done to the slides. And, and again, I'm gonna say it's the same thing that I said to the AMP Committee the other day. That, you know, after winning the award that we won, our staff over there is really, really proud of what they did and they should be. And, and I think we need to continue to show them that we're, we're supporting them by putting money into the park, get it updated and brought back. Not, not that it was horrible, but there's, again, some maintenance that's been needed to be done for a while now. And so we're getting that done. And we're, we're gonna move forward with some slide repairs and, and restoration with that as we get into the spring. It'll all be ready to go before we open for next season. And then other than that, Parks is, everything's rocking along pretty well right now. We, we were able to get the tombstones over here at the, at the cemetery fixed. I didn't tell you about that last month. And forgot to, to pass that on, but those are fixed. We have those taken care of. Those were vandalized and, and kicked over and, and broke, so we had to contract somebody to come get them. We did have a tree that we needed to have removed up here on one of the city properties. It was dead and it was on our property and, and obviously in violation of our own codes. So we, we, we got that taken care of and got that down. Walking trails are in good shape. We, we hope to have all the contracts and the motion, or the notice to proceed from the state. So that we can start our Lake Alma Trails next month. That's, that's what it's looking like. We're gonna be able to start breaking ground on those next month. And so again, nobody, nobody, I mean, there's no question how excited I am on that because this has been a long road. So fun to see that stuff coming around. It's gonna be nice. Other than that, Parks. Anybody have any question on Parks? Anybody? All right. Under the mayor's notes, share with you of the library. We, we have a, an issue with brick and mortar. February, on a couple of the walls, there's some war. And we have some, we have some folks looking at it to see what they believe is gonna be the issue and the fix. What that's gonna be. So the, we had a economic meeting back last week. We, this was with our, the folks that came out of the University of Arkansas Little Rock. This is the Arkansas Economic Institute, Economic Development Institute, EI. And we, we expected to have, like, what were we coding, like, three? I thought, I think we thought there was gonna be three of them that was gonna come. And they brought seven. There was a whole team of them that came in for this. It was very fruitful. They were, they were very excited with what they heard and what they saw. When, and we, we talked to them about what we were working on with the consultants, with the land use. We, we talked to them about the retail study, which they, they reiterated that that was gonna be vital. And very important to what they do, the work that they do. And so the way, and then we were talking with one of the other consultants earlier today. And so again, we're, we're setting ourselves up here in a position to be, we have the, the retail study done. We have the economic impact study done. We have overall asset mapping for the city. And, and then the land use along with the master street plan. And you'll, and, and we'll take all of that and put it into a comprehensive plan that will also include like our trail system and, and everything. So that when we're finished, we have a comprehensive twenty to twenty-five year plan that basically says, here's what we are, here's where we're going. And, and then from there, it's just gonna be a matter of the compositical stuff in place to support that plan. So we're excited about all of that. And, and again, those, those guys that came in with, with that team, they were, they really liked what they heard and what they saw, so. The Christmas parade, I had a chance to get down for the parade. We, again, it was, it was nice to see the turnout and the participation. I don't know how many people we normally have in a parade, but we did have ninety-one entries. And for the, the whole route of the parade, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna do some fine tuning to it. And we're gonna talk a little bit about the route. We tried to stagger, because we, we were under the understanding that. Road, so we, we tried to stagger the parades in a sense to be able to keep people off both sides of the road. And the band didn't do that. And, and, and so, you know, we, we just gotta, there's gonna be some things that we're gonna have to try to do a little bit different next year. But the idea is, and we need to, it's going into this, this first year of bringing it back downtown. We've never had to deal with a medium before. How to make it work, because we won't parade downtown. So we'll do it, we'll, we'll get it to work. But we haven't had any complaints other than, you know, two people being upside by side and somebody not being able to see through to the other float. And, but we've had lots of compliments on how the parade went. With our festivals, I, I've gotta tell you this too. With the council, Mr. Wakefield and Mr. McGee was in the meeting the other day with the AMP Commission. As far as I'm concerned, this is the best compliment the city could, could, could get. And we were talking about the, the different events and the Christmas parade and, and what we've done this last year. And Sammy from Geno's, we specifically came up about the Boo Fest. And we were talking about the, the mobile analytics and, and being able to, you know, see where people were coming from and then how many people would be here. And then most importantly, what are those people going to do? You know, where are they headed afterwards? And he, he said then that the night of the Boo Fest, he had the best night he's ever had over there at the store. And, and so think about this for just a minute. We gave away seventeen hundred hot dogs that night. Couple of hundred hamburgers and then some, I don't know how much Keith, how much barbecue Keith cooked up, but I know he cooked up some afterwards. So, so we. Seventeen hundred hot dogs, a couple hundred hamburgers, barbecue, some apples, supposed to be canned apples, but they were just twisted apples. And lots of candy and McDonald's and Sonic and Geno's and Bronz, everybody was packed that night. So again, that goes back to what I said about the Liberty Fest. That tells me that we're, we're, we're hitting, we're staying focused on the community and we're. And ride on. So I think, again, and for the events group, that was the best compliment that we could have got right there. So I'm really proud of those men and women on that committee that helped put everything together. So, and then as always, if anybody has any suggestions about the Christmas parade, you know, contact me, Miss Talk. We're all ears. We wanna be able to make that thing better moving forward for everyone, so. Outside of that, I don't have any other announcements other than to remind you of the community broadband meeting. It's gonna be on December twentieth, four P M. at the Community Building. Again, this is with that group that is, this is part of the state initiative right now. We've talked a little bit about this, that what the state's looking at when it comes to broadband. Instead of having a pot of money that cities just apply for to try to do broadband projects. They're talking about they could possibly have a, a bigger impact if they were to just do a state initiative and a state project. So it's important to get some input on that in that meeting. Again, it's gonna be December twentieth at the Community Building, four P M. And that's it. Anybody have any questions for me on anything? Wanna make sure that, that we wish everyone a Merry Christmas. I hope everyone has an absolute blessed Christmas with their families. And we're looking forward to 2022 for sure. Mr. McGee?
I'm over your turn.
We have a second. We have a second for Mr. Thacker. If there is no opposition, then we are adjourned.
You did it, James. You did it.
What are you, what are you looking at?
Well.
Harry, Harry.
You want, you want to be.
Before the end of the year, you want to.
Last night at eight-thirty finished. Last night at eight-thirty finished.
So open, open forum here.
May I get your week?
Okay, we're working on a study session. Do we want to do it before the end of the year? Maybe we still have to, we kind of work at the budget.
Y'all might. We'll be here.
We gotta look at the budget and we need to look at the, uh, redw use.
There's also a couple of, there's other things.
We gotta listen to things we still gotta talk about, so.
I think the budget probably needs to be, again, just.
Yeah, it needs to be now.
You didn't get that?
Nope.
You didn't get that date?
Nope.
We didn't say yet.
I didn't think so. But I wanted to know what was suggested.
So we still need to do a study session to discuss the budgets that we did not do anything with tonight. And also with the retail.
You go ahead and mute Christmas. We'll see you later.
I'm hoping anytime y'all figure it out.
What about the week following? Is the week following Christmas?
That'd be the twenty-seventh on the budget.
If not the twenty-seventh, then we're gonna be pushing into next year, be like the third.
Yeah, it probably needs to be that week, oh, you know, the twenty-seventh. Just one point, you have to deliver everyone the passage, yeah.
Let's just stack up every Monday between here and there.
So the twenty-seventh, the only time, I've got, I've got meetings on first, too.
The twenty-seventh, let's see, our regular council meeting's gonna be, is that the twentieth?
Yes.
Of January. So we've got the twenty-seventh, the third, and the tenth between now and that date. Need to meet at least one of those. Probably gonna end up meeting two of them.
Yeah, so let's just go ahead and front load it and go twenty-seventh and then.
Twenty-seventh and third, is that what you're saying, Frank?
Go ahead and plan on the twenty-seventh and then if we need to have.
And on the agenda for the twenty-seventh, we need to have first a budget.
Yeah.
What about the orphan?
They, that time goes forward.
Yeah, that's part of the forward. Well, I guess that falls into twenty-twenty-one as well, but yeah, add it to that same date.
So I'm, I'm writing down the twenty-seventh and the third.
Twenty-seventh, sure.
And then if we need the third or the tenth, yeah.
Twenty-seventh and the third.
Twenty-seventh is six o'clock, correct?
Yeah.
And Mark can read, please, because he read.
Mark just said, you didn't.
Okay.
I'll send you some.
I got it, you're correct.
Twenty-seventh is for sure.
Thank you, Jesus.
Can you look at that?
Me, too.
We're probably gonna end up using the third, tenth anyway, because that's.